Okay, we're ready to begin. Welcome to the April 2nd meeting 2024 of the Rybrook Zoning Board of Appeals. With us this evening, we have four of the five members. And basically, that translates to, in order to get an application approved this evening, you have to have a successful vote from three out of the four members. That being said, if any of you want to adjourn your application to the May meeting, which we assume will be conducted, you're free to do so. And we'll let you do that up until any time that your application is being heard. So if you have any questions at that time, you could ask. This evening, with the four members, we have Building Inspector, Village Building Inspector Steve Hughes, we have Counsel Christian Gates, representing the village, representing the Board of Trustees, David Heiser, sitting over there by the wall, and Video Coordinator is Fred Seifert. Is there anyone at this time who would like to request their application to be moved to the May calendar? Okay, there being none, let's go ahead with the first application. When your application is called, please go to the podium, state your name, your address, if you're representing the applicant, your role as agent. The first application is Application ZBA 24-002, Dan Zhu, 5 Deer Run, Legalize Interior and Exterior Additions and Alterations, Rear Elevated Deck Expansion with Steps to Grade, Swimming Pool Patio, Walkway Expansions, Outdoor Kitchen, Koi Pond, Gazeebo, Concrete Patio, Sports Court, Generator Fencing, and Finished Basement. Who is representing the applicant? Please come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Daniel Tartaglia, 800 Westchester Avenue, Rybrook, New York. I'm an attorney representing both the current property owner, Dan Zhu, Julia Zhu, and the former property owner, who's here with us this evening as well, is Joseph Pessell. This application, this application came about as a result of a sale of the property from the Pessells to the Zews back in August of 2023. There apparently was an open building permit that needed to be closed out during the course of the closing, and the building inspector visited the site in order to make sure that that permit could be closed out. And upon inspecting the backyard, saw that over the course of many, many years, things had been added to the backyard in locations that either required variances, and in the case of two of the improvements actually required us to go to the Board of Trustees to get a Hold Harmless Agreement, because the northerly border of the property, there is a drainage easement. If you go by the property, if you have, if you drove by, you'll see that there's a catch basin in Deer Run, and the, so presumptively, there's a, there's a stormwater line that runs along the northerly portion of the property. In cases like this, there's oftentimes an easement agreement or some kind of an easement instrument that, you know, that runs to the favor of the village for purposes of maintenance and repairs to the easement area or to the facility within the easement area. In this case, it's probably some kind of a stormwater pipe. In case the village has to go in and either clean it out, or restore it, or repair it, or replace it, that easement agreement typically keeps the property owner from putting anything along the easement area, depending upon what was presented to the planning board at the time that the subdivision was approved. In this particular case, this subdivision was approved in the early 80s, and at the time, the easement, which appears on the subdivision plat, didn't have any notes on the map with regard to restrictions within that easement area, and there was no recorded easement with regard to restrictions within that easement area.
I apologize. Is the easement a zoning issue?
Well, it's part of the history of the project and the application as to, as to the first thing that we needed to accomplish prior to coming here. So the, we went to the Board of Trustees and got the Hold Harmless Agreement and got that signed, and that was recorded. Now, within that easement area are two of the items that are on for variance this evening. One is a koi pond, and one is the, what's being called a barbecue and kitchen area. If you, if you take a look at the survey, you can see that those are located within the easement area. So the legality of leaving those there within the easement area, having nothing to do with zoning, but the legality of leaving those there on an easement running to the benefit of the village, has been taken care of. What's left is a bunch of improvements or modifications that were made in the backyard that were done over a period of over 20 years that have, that require some setback variances and one variance to impervious surface. So I've laid out in my correspondence to the board what those variances are. They're taken from the denial letter, from the Building Department, and you can see that on the second page of my submission, what the variances are, what's being requested. I will tell you that the so-called Concrete Patio Sports Court was originally a grass area where there was a jungle gym and some other play equipment as the children got older. That was taken out, and a concrete pad was put in with a basketball court. So that was about 10 years ago. The so-called kitchen, the outdoor covered kitchen, is movable, but it is within the side yard, and the koi pond, which is not movable, is also within the side yard. The shed has already been replaced by the current homeowner. So it was removed from the existing footings, and it was moved slightly away from the rear and the side yard setbacks. When I visited the site, I didn't, I didn't have a way to measure that, but I do know that it has been removed. Is it, is it completely out of the setback area? I'm not sure, but it has been replaced. It's been taken off the original footings, and it has been moved. So the other thing that I wanted to mention is with regard to the impervious surface coverage variance that's being requested, the swimming pool is included in impervious surface in the Village of Rybrook. I did, I did a search on various codes throughout the county, and there are some that include swimming pools in the definition of impervious surface, because technically, they are. If you empty the pool, it's concrete. It's not pervious. It's impervious. But when the pool is full, is it actually creating more runoff? It's difficult to say. The same is true of the koi pond. So without those two elements, there'd be no necessity for that variance. So one of the arguments that, that we feel is relevant is the fact that the swimming pool, even though it's calculated for purpose of impervious surface coverage, in many codes, it's not, because if you look at its functionality, if it has any functionality with regard to stormwater, it actually can act as a retention or a detention facility. But that's causing the impervious surface coverage requirement. I don't really have much else to add. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes, sir?
I do have a question. You said the prior owner is here, correct?
Yes, sir.
What is her obligation per her agreement with the new owner in terms of correcting these items?
To get them corrected.
So this is basically on her, the person who created these issues? Or is it the prior owner, I'm saying? If something has to be moved, the cost of that, who bears that cost?
It's the, it's the prior owner.
The prior owner would be.
Correct.
How did this come to light?
Sale.
Yeah, as I explained, there was an open swimming pool permit. Well, Stephen can tell you. There was an open swimming pool permit.
Yeah, and basically, the, when they filed to close out the permit, a survey is required, and then, as I saw the survey, that's when we noticed all these other improvements were made without permit.
And as one of the reasons, one of the reasons I'm raising that is, you know, one of your arguments is that it's not self-created. And that's correct. The new owner didn't self-create it. The prior owner did, but the prior owner basically sold it, and he accepted that sale subject to this. So in a sense, he assumed these issues, knowing that the prior owner's on the hook for it.
You know, I, I say in my letter that it is, it was self-created. What I said in the letter is that the fact that it was self-created alone is not sufficient standard to deny the variances. But it clearly was self-created. There's no doubt about it. They have been here for many years. The other thing I should mention, if you, if you've done it, if you went by the site, the exterior of the site is completely screened off with landscaping, with Arbevade and other landscaping, so that the, you know, these things are not even visible from the two adjacent properties.
Steve, can you possibly shed light? It may be, it may be out of your purview, but the two items that are over the easement, if the village had to go there for whatever reason, they, in effect, provide an obstacle for maintenance?
Yeah, well, that was the reason for the Hold Harmless Letter, which stipulated that the village had, always has the right to go in at the owner's cost, at the owner's expense. So either the owner will have to remove those items and put those items back under their own course, or the village will do it with notice. So that was the whole harmless.
Yeah, I have, I have an easement between mine and my neighbor's property, and I've been in that house for 47 years. And I don't, and my neighbor puts nothing on that easement with the, because the village comes there every so often, the maintenance crew, and goes down that easement and tries to maintain it. So what I'm concerned about is that we heard that the outdoor kitchen is movable, in a movable state. So that's relatively easy, I guess, to move out of the way, but the koi pond is a koi pond, and, you know, that, that could be a problem at that particular point in time. And my interpretation is, is we have, well, we have the possibility of if it's moved now, then there's no future concern with maintenance. But if it's delayed, and we hope for the best, that there'll never be a need, then the burden is then assumed by the owner at a later point in time. Is my reading of that correct?
Yes, Don, that's correct.
And what is the purpose of this particular easement? What's there?
Storm drains?
There's a storm.
Yeah, there's underground storm drains. So technically, you're not supposed to rest anything on a, you know, underground pipe, you know, for various reasons.
Yeah, I have, I have a three-foot diameter storm drain in the easement next to my house. And that's a very vital thing to push water into Rich Manor Park, you know, from the, from the different storm drains. And I'm just wondering if in the past, has the village ever maintained this one? In fact, if they didn't know it existed, they couldn't maintain it. And when they found out that existed, have they maintained it?
No, they knew it existed. There's records on it, but I don't, that would be a question for Michael Nowak, Superintendent of Public Works. If he's ever had to access it or maintain it, I wouldn't know off the top.
Could we ask, could you ask the owner, if, the previous owner, if there's ever been a team that has worked on that?
Mr. Pessell, do you have any knowledge as to, has anybody ever, from the village, ever had to go and clean out that drainage pipe? Should I ask him to step up?
Sure.
No, they haven't ever come.
It's only a short drainage from the road, partially to the brook. It don't go all the way down. There's a, there's an underground concrete barrier that they had, and they used to have riprap from there down.
Right.
But because it ended up to be a mosquito haven, they ended up putting an additional pipe all the way down to the brook, and they've never had a problem since they did that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Do you know about when that was, when the village did that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when the village did that?
Oh, old time, over 20 years, more than 20 years ago. Of course, within the first five years, they had the problem to riprap, to get algae and the mosquitoes, and so all the people in the area in 5 Deer Run complained, and they had to rip the pipe down to there.
Did you, was the, was the koi pond installed before that occurred, or after that?
After that.
After that, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pessell. Why don't you sit up front, in case there's another question?
So would I be correct in presuming that the issue with the koi pond is, A, if they need to get to the drainage pipe, you know, the koi pond's in the way, and B, if the pond becomes defective in some way where the concrete breaks or collapses, it could, it could damage the drain? Those would be like the two primary issues?
Yeah, depending upon the size of the drain, the vegetation that's next to the koi pond could impact the piping, or whatever size piping it is. I had that on my property, where the trees decided to invade a, an iron pipe going out to the sewer, and it was compromised and had to be replaced. So that was the logic of my asking about that, that, because one possibility is to, is for the board to ask that the koi pond be removed, which leads me to my next question. If the, the statement was made about the shed being moved, have, are you able to verify if it's, if it's conforming now to code?
I can only go on what the survey shows. I haven't been back to the site since last year, the middle of last year. So I don't know if it's moved or not. It still will have to be memorialized on the survey if it is, if it has been removed. We don't have a survey showing, we have a survey, the survey that was submitted shows it where it needs a variance.
Where was the shed? Well, the follow-up to that is, since they moved it once, if it's, if it's not currently, if it needs to be moved a little bit more in whatever direction, is it movable, the shed?
Yes.
So that, so basically, if we deny the variance as to the shed, it could be moved to whatever proper location without too much difficulty?
And from my, just, just my observation, and I wasn't able to take measurements, from my observation when I visited the site, it looks like it has been moved from the original footing.
If it wasn't, if it needs to be moved another X number of feet, it can be moved.
I believe in this room.
Okay.
No, the shed.
Yes.
But Mr. Pessell hasn't seen the new shed location.
Okay.
I would just like him to make a quick statement about the Hold Harmless Agreement. With this Hold Harmless Agreement, the village is not liable. If the koi pond or anything within that easement area needs to be removed, causes damage or issues, that is solely the responsible, responsibility of the property owner. If the village is forced to incur costs in order to remove these elements that are, you know, obstructing the easement, the property owner would also be liable to reimburse the village.
And this is also true under common law. What most people don't realize, the street in front of you doesn't, the right-of-way doesn't end at the end of the macadam. The right-of-way extends into most people's front yards. You put landscaping there, they have to widen the road, or they have to make some improvements. The municipality or the county, whosever road it is, can take your landscaping out at your cost. It's the same kind of an issue. So that's what's occurred here.
One of the goals, our goal is to minimize the number of variances and still meet the applicant's needs. So I'd like the current owner, if he could come forward, indicate how far closer to the pool, to the sports court was the shed moved, and is it, is it possible to still move the shed to comply without necessarily adversely affecting the sports court?
I could ask that.
Please, please, ask, is it the new owner here?
I thought you said the shed was there.
That's a shed, right.
Oh, I thought you put, you wanted to, oh, okay. Because there was one back there, that's why I thought you referred to it first.
Is Mr. Zhu here?
No.
He's the applicant. Is that an issue?
Well, he signed the application. I represent the Zews, you know, I've been coordinating this with their attorney as well.
If you, if you want, by comparison, this was the original, this was the original shed, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, because we have, in the past, we have asked people to move their sheds and other things if it's a part of the application. Yeah, the shed is there on the line.
And, and he said the shed was moved and it's movable. So if it's, if it needs to be moved further, it can be moved further.
It was moved, it was moved north, so it was moved away from the side yard. I think it's in the same proximity with the rear yard, but I think it was moved away from the side yard already. How much further it can be moved, I don't know.
Yeah, we're looking at the survey, we're looking at the survey, and it looks like it's abutting the side yard, but at the same time, it's very close to the rear.
Right, and then this one, you have this one, right? That has to, where it was moved?
This is where it was moved?
This was where it was moved, the second option, I don't know.
I believe the old shed was taken down, the new shed was put up.
I didn't realize that.
But you also see that it butts, it butts up against that concrete pad, so I don't know if it could be moved, you know, vertically, I mean, up.
It's also, but it is now, the new one is actually on part of the concrete patio.
Right, it's kind of cantilevered.
You want to take a look at it? So you can...
Yeah, this is the new location.
And it looks like it's, it's overlapping the patio, the sports court a little bit.
It is, and it's kind of, the sports court ends there, and it is a drop-off, so it's kind of cantilevered. So there's, there's supports in the back that hold it up to the level of the sports court.
I am trying to pull up now the, the actual number of variances for the application. Six?
There are, there are five. There was a typo in the resolution. I apologize.
Okay, and with respect to the, with respect to the shed part, that's what I'm trying to pull up now, the actual wording of that variance for the shed.
And can I ask why all this work was done over the years without any permit, without a request?
Well, I'll let Mr. Pessell answer for himself, but it happened incrementally. The Pessells lived there for over 40 years. Like I said, the, the sport court started out as a grass area with a jungle gym. As the children got older, they took it out, they put that down. That was over 20 years ago. The koi pond went in about 15 years ago. The outdoor kitchen, which Mr. Pessell tells me is movable, that went in over 10 years ago. The shed, I mean, there's sheds all over the village. I have, there's sheds all over the village. And the impervious surface, as I indicated to you, but for the swimming pool, you know, there isn't an issue, and I don't know how much, you know, I served on the planning board here for many years, and, and, you know, but for the definition in the code, I don't really know what it adds in terms of sheet flow.
Yeah, except, well, I, while I don't disagree with that, I would say that, and, you know, we could grant the variance, but I would say that if it's in the code, that's what we go by.
Oh, it's no question.
So, so, so it's kind of, you know, I can't, I can't look at it like it doesn't really count. It counts.
I agree.
Even if you may not, or some people may not agree that, with that, but that's, that's the code we're dealt.
It's in our code. I agree.
And there's a difference between a contractor doing work and not following code and you didn't know versus not bothering to check what's permitted or not permitted over the years.
Yeah, I don't...
I don't know.
I've known Mr. Pessell for several months. I don't get the impression it was he and his wife's MO to try to get over on anybody. I, you know, I just don't, I think it just, we'll put it here, we'll put it there. If you, if you look at, I don't know if you've ever seen the entire subdivision itself. Have you ever seen the map itself? It's, this is, this is an oddly configured lot. It gets, it gets very narrow very quickly, which, which is, which is part of the reason why I think everything, or some of the things ended up where they did, you know, and that has to do with the configuration of the lot. But other than that, you know, I'll...
Is, can I just ask a question? Is there still, is there still a basketball court on that patio or, or that's usable?
There's a basketball net, yes.
Yeah, what happened, we originally had the jungle gym for the kids, and as they got older, and they're going to grandkids' camp, and said, we can't too old for this, and what could we do? So we decided on the basketball court, and for the girls, I bought a bowling pin set, plastic, and they rolled the pins down on there, and the box key court, they use there. So it was good for the girls and the boys, you know what I mean?
Does the Deer Run complex have an HOA, or are they independent?
There's no homeowners association.
Okay, good. One, one of the problems in, that we've encountered as a zoning board, and I'm sure Counselor is aware, that most people who acquire homes in Rybrook don't read the entire very thick village code of standards, and they pretty much think that they could do things incrementally over time without getting permits for that. And, and they do it perhaps in good faith. I don't think too many people do it deliberately, although I have known situations where they have, but most of the time, it's innocent. They just, as the children grow...
I agree with that, but as far as the shed is concerned, the gazebo 30 years ago, I called the town. They said, as long as I didn't physically attach it to the ground permanently with a foundation, I could put it anywhere I want. The gazebo, they said, same thing, just put it there, do not attach it to the ground. That's the reason why we put them where they are. I had no idea 30 years later, there's going to be a problem.
If I were to call the Building Department today and say, I wanted to put a shed up, they would probably tell me there's such a thing as a side yard setback and a rear yard setback, and it would have to be. That's what the building inspector told me when the town took an aerial photograph of my property and told me I was two feet into the Rich Manor Park, and told me if they didn't, if I didn't move the shed, they will take me to court. That was the last motivation for me to move my shed.
We did move it from where it originally was. It wasn't closer to the fence, and he could attest to that.
Exactly.
I think he missed it by six inches away from the sidewall. When the guy moved it, he evidently didn't quite measure it right. It's within six inches of the sidewall, instead of being five feet, you know, 4.6 or something like that.
Well, yeah, the variance, I think, for, just for the shed, but I'm referring to all of these incremental improvements that you've made over time. The shed is, you're requesting a rear yard setback of 3.65 instead of 4.60. So the statement is five feet is what is needed, and given all of this machinations of selling the property, it would have been a good idea to check how far the shed had to be moved to be compliant, so another variance wasn't necessary. That, notwithstanding, happened, you know, it's in the past. Our situation now is, and we have several of these applications that come before us, when there's a pending sale, the building inspector notices certain infractions of the property, and they're brought to our attention. And we're put in a position as a zoning board of, of having to say, take them all out, take some of them out, or let's just approve this and move on. We are governed by, by five factors by the state of New York, as your attorney properly pointed out in, in the application. That's what we have to use, but it's still very frustrating when we have an application coming before us with a substantial number of variances, and we are put in a position of either saying, knock them all out, knock some of them out, or do nothing. That's the position we're in. And I just wanted to let you know, not just you, but all the other people, the millions of people who are watching on... coming before us with a substantial number of variances, and we are put in a position of either saying, knock them all out, knock some of them out, or do nothing, that's the position we're in. And I just wanted to let you know, not just you, but all the other people, the millions of people who are watching on Ry Brook Television, that this is an issue, and, and, you know, the argument that a lot of people say it's a lot easier to ask forgiveness than to ask for permission, and that puts us in a very difficult position as, as colleagues of you and citizens of Ry Brook to have to make these kinds of decisions, but that's the position we're in. Is there any other questions of the...
Just to be clear, the, the setback on the shed that's listed here, that's the setback that existed prior to moving the shed, or the current, or currently after the shed's been moved?
This is currently after the shed's been moved.
Right, so it currently requires a one point three five rear yard and point four oh, okay, gotcha. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Whose responsibility is the shed? Well, because weren't some of the other things there, the...
Everything was there.
But the shed...
He's made the shed a little better by moving it, but it was still...
Yeah, he, he tried to preempt. He, when he got the list of what the violations were, I guess he tried to preempt and, and do the movement before, you know.
And he didn't quite make it over, but he...
Did he ask you, Steve, at all?
No.
Okay, so somebody came and said, let's move it here, whether it's the applicant or the contractor, somebody decided where to put it.
And it can be moved, I believe it can be moved a little...
I know, I moved mine, I saw, I know it can be moved.
It's, it's not, there's no foundation to it.
But there is a cost, I mean, there is a cost to move.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
And literally, we're talking a foot, so, yeah.
That's the issue. Okay, no further questions, can I have a motion to close? Oh, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak for the application? There'd be none, anyone want to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name, your address, and your clarification request.
Sure, I'll clarify the attorney, actually.
Oh.
My name is Ben Tapper, I live at four Deer Run, the property to the south, I'm sorry, I think it's to the south, up the hill.
Next door?
Yes.
Facing to the right?
Deer Run is weird in that it's sequential, so if you are staring at the front of five, I'm to the left, as number four, six would be to the right.
Okay.
I think it's south too, yeah. You... Hi Sharon. Okay. No, lost dogs and cats, that's how we know each other, and down trees. There is actually no cover on the five Deer Run side of the fence line, the R5s are actually on my property, which is four, so I just, I wanted to clarify that, that was it.
Good, okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Anyone want to speak opposed to the application? Okay, there'd be, I could have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay, so we've been down this road before. The question is, you know, we talked about moving, moving the koi pond now, or hoping for the best, and the possibility of moving the shed. My guess is if the kitchen were moved, it would be moved right back, you know, and then just moved as necessary if needed. The...
I mean, the shed, frankly, I would, I would have said, move it, it's movable, they've moved it, but at this point, they've moved it, and, and it's so de minimis at this point, I'm inclined to leave the shed alone. You know, it's, it's probably the easiest thing to take off the list, but it's also doesn't make a lot of sense at this point.
I agree, I agree. I agree. The, with respect to the collectivity of the variances, we, we all saw the, the material that Mr. Tartalia submitted. I just have a concern with one, I don't think it's the end of the world, it's not going to change my mind, but just pointing it out, I don't think all of these collectively are de minimis.
This question is not de minimis.
It's not de minimis, okay, and it's self-created. There was, Steve, maybe you can confirm this, somebody came to you and indicated that they lived nearby for a couple of decades, and it's never been a problem to them. Do you recall that?
No, I think they called in and spoke to somebody in the office, they didn't speak directly to me, but that, that message was related, yes.
That they were neighbors of some sort, and it hasn't been a problem. The issue comes to the character of the neighborhood, and it was brought out by Mr. Tartalia that these things are not visible from the street, and you all saw pictures or visited, you saw the vegetation around it.
Any flooding issues?
Steve, are you aware of any flooding issues?
No, I'm not aware of any flooding issues over there.
Someone in the audience is saying there is.
It's right on Blind Brook, there is flooding, yes.
Can you come to the front there? Just clarification, because we all know, we're following the current situation at Brook Lane, and the attempt to buy houses from people in that particular area.
My, my name is Sharon Heller, I live at twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, which is the property adjacent to five Deer Run and four Deer Run to the south. So my driveway borders, Mr. Tappers there along the driveway, and part of my yard borders five Deer Run, but both my property, twenty-two Lincoln Avenue and five Deer Run, is on Blind Brook. Back during the recent storm, I think it was Ida, there was massive flooding there. Six Deer Run got flooded out, which is to the west of five Deer Run, so it came down, it was flooded, I think it was up to his back door, so his whole backyard was flooded, and then the way the brick runs, it kind of curves around, and it actually goes into Harrison, so we actually have an overflow of the brick on the Harrison side. As it comes down underneath my bridge, there are the bridge that crosses my property into Harrison, is an old fire bridge that's been there since like, I think, the eighteen nineties. But if you look at the stone wall on the Harrison side or the purchase side of the property, that's been all washed out from the flooding, which is right behind five Deer Run and my property on twenty-two Lincoln Avenue. So there is massive flooding at that time. During Ida also, the flooding was so bad, it came up over the bridge, and I had six deer, the gentleman from six Deer Runs, his swing set, his kid's swing set actually ended up in my yard. So, yes, there is flooding in that area.
I'm going to raise a question, I don't know the answer to this, given the impervious situation, if the variance was denied, and for the sake of argument, the pool had to be gotten rid of and turned back to grassland or whatever, would that, is that something that would make a difference in the flooding situation? Or am I, or am I just, is that irrelevant?
Well, no, she's, she's not qualified to answer that question.
No, I know she's not, I understand, she, I'm just not directed at her.
Oh, okay.
It's a question in general, I don't, I know, I wasn't expecting you to answer that.
No, right.
It's a, it's a question in general, whether it's relevant, the impervious situation here is relevant to any type of flooding issue.
No, I, I just think the flooding is from Blind Brook, and like I said, as it comes down from upper, from Westchester Airport and on down, you saw all the houses along Lincoln Avenue were affected, like forty-two and forty-eight, and the bridges, bridges were taken out there, and as it, like I said, as it comes down deer, through Deer Run, six was affected, I'm not sure if seven was affected or not, and then it goes across, it kind of widens out, or actually, our side, the west, east side of Blind Brook is a little higher than the west side, so the water floods out towards Harrison, and that becomes, and where the municipal park is, and that becomes like a lake during heavy rains and storms.
According to Village Code, if this application came before the building department for the swimming pool, the sports court, the koi pond, the shed, and everything else, it will exceed the four hundred square foot trigger to require a storm management system. But because these things were done incrementally without permit, there was no storm warning management system required for, for this property, which is another issue.
And I think that's kind of hitting it right on the nose.
But the, the problem is, you know, what, what can be done retrofittedly if they were to put CULTEC units on the property now, and they basically would have to be in an open area, you know, probably on a grass area, and what would they, what would they do? We're just not in a position to be able to judge that as a board, I don't think we have the, the technical expertise. Yes, please. You've heard this drill before.
I, I have heard this before. I live downstream, I live in Brookridge Court, I've lived in the village my whole life, seventy years. It never used to flood, now it floods. In Ida, I lost my whole basement. This problem is, is incremental. This problem is, is also a problem that is added to by every property along the Blind Brook. It's exacerbated by the fact that the Blind Brook runs through different jurisdictions. So the village comes along and says, well, we're going to try to help Avon Circle, we're going to try to help Brook Lane, but until the town Harrison does what they're supposed to do, the issues, the issues remain. So is there downstream flooding? I can say absolutely, I've suffered from it. Is this adding to it? Every little bit adds to it. Is removing this going to help it? It's not going to help it. There's bigger issues, there's bigger issues north of here, there's bigger issues, the, in, in my, in my own opinion, having nothing to do with this, we really need a flood control district, an intermunicipal flood control district created by the county so that the resources are all together, monies can be borrowed, properties can be assessed for purposes of the district to try to start to solve this problem. To think a zoning board or a planning board can solve this problem on a, a koi pond that's the size of that tabletop, you know, is, is laudable, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's really going to help much.
No, I, I agree, and as a resident here for forty-seven years, I, I can attest to the evolution of the flooding problem. The infrastructure's not capable of handling the demands placed on it by the, the properties.
Yeah, one thing I, I'm sorry, I mean, one thing I would add in, in, in response to your question, there is a portion of this property that's within the one hundred foot, the one hundred year flood plain, and there's a portion of this property that is within the five hundred year flood plain. I think if you look at the GIS maps, and I think Counsel has it pulled up on his computer, you can see that the, the five, even the five hundred year flood plain is to the west of the swimming pool. I don't think the swimming pool or any of these improvements, with the exception of maybe the gazebo, are in either of those flood plains.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I think one of the issues is there was, you know, there are so many variances, and picking one, you know, picking that doesn't really do much, especially the shed, and yet, you know, as you said, cumulatively or collectively, there's a lot there. There's a lot there, and, and, you know, we normally try to split the baby down the middle, so to speak, and I'm not sure you could really do that here.
No, I, I agree, no, I agree. My first reaction to the, seeing the application, but the digger, the more I dug, dug into it, the more I realized the, the interrelationships and the fact that in putting a cost on the new owner would be, in my opinion, unreasonable penalty.
The cost isn't on the new owner, the cost is on the prior owner.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and I'm assuming that, I assume title was granted with these provisions, and, you know, we don't know, but this may have been part of the negotiation.
It was, that's why, that's why the old owner's here.
Right, right, but not, but I mean, even in the purchase price, and, and, and so, I'm just saying it's, I, I know we're, you know, I, you know what, okay.
No, no, it's a tough one, yeah.
I mean, my, my take on it, very bluntly, is put it, put aside the impervious for a second. The rest of that stuff, it's, it's fairly minor, maybe, maybe, don't, you know, the kitchen, it's immovable, get it, get it the heck out of there, but it's, it's all fairly minor. So it's either you basically accept it all, or you look at the impervious and knock out everything, you know, and say sixteen hundred square feet on the impervious is ridiculous, and, and you knock out the pool, the pond, the buh buh buh, it's really one or the other.
Yeah, but it goes back to the character of the neighborhood and the environmental, the environmental concerns, which I think we all are sensitive to. The question is, if, if we did anything on this particular property, I, I cannot say with any degree of certainty that it would make an improvement. You know, therefore, I'm inclined to follow Village Code with respect to what we can and cannot do with respect to our purview with this application. Like I said, if it came before the, the building department, now they would require a storm warning management system. Whether it would help or not, law says they would have to do it if it's four hundred square feet.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying there's nothing we can do now, there's nothing we can do now, I don't think, I don't, I don't see a window, and if nobody else in the board sees a window other than approving this, then we have to go ahead and improve it.
The only thing that is a concern is just precedent.
No, there's no question about it. We are going to see more applications. It is unique to this, to this property, but we are going to see more applications, and we would have to judge them on their merits as they come before us.
Because if they had come before us and saying, we want to add a pool and a koi pond, and it's going to, we need a sixteen hundred and fifty square foot variance for the impervious, I sincerely doubt we, we would, we would approve that.
Not without a storm management plan.
How old's the pool? So, so not...
Basically, I don't disagree with you, I'm just, I just find it, you know, I'll say aggravating, but I don't disagree with you.
All right, as, as we go through the five factors, I, I think that the variances are substantial and they're self-created. The other three, I think, are, are not jeopardizing the application.
Is there anything that needs to be conditioned? So like, the koi pond needs to be replaced?
Well, they hit, they hit the limit with impervious, and I don't know, I don't know where they are with GFA, but...
I thought maybe the koi fish would go into the pool, and then get rid of the koi pond.
Say, or they'll wind up in the, in the Brook.
They'll wind up in Blind Brook, as my neighbors did. Okay, let me go ahead and read this, what, the resolution is broken up into five separate, but what I'm going to do is I'm just going to consolidate them, okay, for purposes of expediting this. Whereas, "Application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Dan Zhu, care of Dan Tartalia, esquire of the applicant, for six area variances in connection with the proposed legalization of interior and exterior additions and alterations, including a rear elevated deck with steps to grade, swimming pool patio, walkway expansion, outdoor kitchen, koi pond, concrete patio, sports court, generator, fencing, and finished basement, on property located at five Deer Run in an R-12 zoning district, and said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Ry Brook as parcel ID number one three five dot six five dash one dash forty-one, the property. And whereas, the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the zoning cord, zoning code." Let me, I'll go through these and then cut them later on. One, section two fifty dash thirty-seven, section C, the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is five thousand five hundred and eighteen point one nine square feet. The total impervious surface that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize, is seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven point three eight square feet, thereby requesting a variance of one thousand six hundred forty-nine point one nine square feet. Two, section two fifty dash six... Two, Section 250-6, Section B, Item 1, Part A. "The minimum required setback for a patio terrace is six feet. The concrete patio sports court that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize, is constructed at the side-side yard property line, thereby requesting a variance of six feet." Three, Section 250-6, Section B, Item 1, Section A. "The minimum required setback for a patio terrace is six feet. The outdoor covered kitchen on the patio that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize, is constructed 1.7 feet from the setback, thereby requesting a variance of 4.3 feet." Four, Section 250-6, Section B, 1, Part A. "The minimum required setback for a patio terrace is six feet. The koi pond that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize, is constructed at the side-yard property line, thereby requesting a variance of six feet." Five, Section 250-6, Section B, Item 1, Part H, referenced in 91-4B, Section 1. "The minimum required setback for a shed is five feet. The shed that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize, is constructed 4.6 feet from the side-yard setback and 3.65 feet from the rear yard setback, thereby requesting a variance of 0.4 feet from the side yard setback and 1.35 feet from the rear yard setback." Whereas, "Duly advertised public hearing was held on April 2, 2024, at which time, public hearing on the application continued. All those wishing to be heard were given such opportunities. Whereas, a public hearing was closed on April 2. Whereas, the proposed action is a Type II action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required." Now, I'll go through the five factors. Whereas, "The board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concerned, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in Section 250-13, Section G, Part B, Item 2, Section B, Items 2A through E of the Rybrook Code, finds with respect to the variance from Section 250.37(c) of the Rybrook Code, allowing a total impervious..." Okay. I'm not going to go through each of the five. I'll do it cumulatively, okay? So we'll go through one of these five factors, but they'll apply for all. "The variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood." Agree?
Yes.
"The benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible to pursue that does not require the variance." Three, "The variance is substantial." Four, "The requested variance will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood." And five, "The need for the variances are self-created." Okay. That applies, in the opinion of the board, to all of them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that said application for the variances to allow total impervious coverage of all of them. Oh, gosh. I'll collectively say, "No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant is paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the view of this application." Okay, are we comfortable with that? All right, let's vote. Steve is excused. Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
On yes, application approved. Four yeses, zero nays, one excused. Okay, congratulations. Thank you for that application, Dan. You think it was me who took the water pill? It was. Do you need the computer or tripod or anything?
Tripod might help.
There is a tripod back there. You could do that in the meantime. You did a good job presenting that, huh?
I just find it very annoying, but...
Of course. You excuse this? Is this windingwood?
I'm excused, but my one's next, not...
Okay, no, not country ridge, right. We're just waiting for one of the board members to return.
I don't know why, when I look at it, I'm in this window like this on my computer, and I can't get it out of like this narrow bend.
Oh, hit the plus minus.
I do.
Oh.
But I'm like almost like this, and it comes up.
Oh.
I haven't figured that out.
See, if you click on the left here, see that shows up?
Yeah.
Which I don't like, because it takes away... Okay, next. Oh, gosh. I got to jump ahead and read the application, just a moment. Got to go back to the beginning. Okay, the next application. Application ZBA 24-003, Joseph Narenberg, Nine Country Ridge Drive. "Widen full length of driveway and install stormwater management system." Please state your name and your agency.
Certainly. Joseph Narenberg. I'm the property owner of Nine Country Ridge Drive. I'm joined tonight by Greg Kachpoli, my licensed civil engineer. And thank you for letting us walk you through our proposal. We appreciate it. I prepared some remarks. I wanted to read to all of you some of the reasonings why I'm pursuing this project. Greg's going to walk you through some of the technical details of obviously the proposal in question. "My wife and I purchased our home just over one year ago. We are proud Rybrook residents. Our neighbors have been most gracious, welcoming us to the community with open arms. We know we made the right decision to call Rybrook our home, and we look forward to planting roots here for years to come. While we love our home and our property, it became immediately apparent to us that our driveway presented some challenges, challenges we hope to rectify in the proposal we present to you this evening. I've identified three primary issues that I would love to discuss and I believe are addressed in our proposal. One, the issue of the driveway's utility. As you can see from our documents, the driveway in its current configuration is one that we would describe as a single curb cut and single car width driveway. While this was likely sufficient in the 1960s when my home and many others in the community were built, it certainly has not kept up with the times. Many decades ago would have been more commonplace for a household to own one car. In our modern society, with the average household having two or more vehicles, this naturally presents challenges when we discuss things like vehicle maneuverability. Having to shuffle cars in such a limited space means vehicles constantly starting, stopping, as well as entering and exiting the street. I think we'd all agree that constantly utilizing the street for maneuverability increases the likelihood for accidents and decreases the safety of both pedestrians and oncoming vehicles alike. If one of the fundamental purposes of a driveway is to provide vehicle maneuverability in a safe and contained environment, certainly, my driveway is not meeting those standards today. Two, the issue of public safety. I touched on the safety issues posed when shuffling multiple vehicles in the driveway. There's a separate safety issue that pertains to the curb cut width of the driveway in its current form. To understand the issue in its entirety, you would first need to understand the geography of the Country Ridge subdivision and the surrounding public roads. The Country Ridge subdivision is a semicircular subdivision of homes adjacent to and surrounding the elementary school. There are three points of entry and exit into the subdivision, all connected to North Ridge Street. Given the location of our home, we, along with our neighbors, utilize the Fair Lawn Parkway exit onto North Ridge Street. This means that when returning home, we always approach the home on our right-hand side. Due to the limited width of our single curb cut, a vehicle does not have sufficient turning radius to pull into the driveway from the right-hand side of the road in one fluid motion. In order to maneuver a vehicle into the driveway, a driver is forced to choose between two dangerous maneuvers. Maneuver A, momentarily veer to the left-hand side of the road, providing a greater turning radius, but positioning the car in the way of potential oncoming traffic. I would add that this is exceedingly dangerous given the road curves just beyond our home. It means that oncoming traffic may have a blind approach. Maneuver B, or Maneuver 2, stay in the right-hand lane and proceed to make a three-point turn into the driveway, forcing a car to remain in the street longer than should be necessary and requiring the driver to reverse into oncoming traffic to gain enough turning radius with a three-point maneuver. In either event, neither of these maneuvers should be acceptable to do something as simple as enter or exit the property and, as stated, create unnecessary safety issues for the surrounding community. Addressing all the utility and safety issues we've discussed so far can only be achieved by widening the driveway at all points along the length of the driveway, up to and including the curb cut. Issue number three is the issue of equity. Gentlemen of the board, hopefully, I've provided you sufficient reason to look favorably on our renovation plans this evening, but I want to provide you some additional points of information as you consider your decision. When Greg and I initially set out to create these plans, we wanted to perform a study to understand the surrounding neighborhood and how our property compared to that of our neighbors. We wanted to ensure that not only were we addressing the issues previously mentioned, but that we were doing so in a way that would conform with the surrounding homes in our neighborhood. We evaluated 36 homes in a 500-foot radius of our home, and with the assistance of public records as well as satellite imagery, attempted to capture statistics for each property. We looked at statistics such as the total lot size and the total area of paved driveway to establish a percentage of paved driveway relative to the size of the lot. We believe this is an important metric as it puts all houses on equal footing when establishing an average for how much of a property is currently paved driveway. In our findings, we established that the average driveway in our neighborhood is just under 1,200 square feet and that the average percent of paved property is 7.42% of total lot size. Our home at Nine Country Ridge currently has 490 square feet of paved driveway and represents 3.25% of our total lot. As you can see, even doubling the existing square footage of our driveway would still represent a driveway that is smaller than the average of our neighborhood. Once again, I want to thank you for inviting me tonight to bring this proposal before the board. I'm going to hand it over to Greg to walk you through any of the particulars. Thank you again.
Sure.
Good evening, members of the board. I guess I'll just quickly go over the numbers in terms of what the existing driveway is and what we're proposing. The existing driveway is approximately 10 feet wide.
Here's an existing site plan. The existing driveway went here, 10 feet wide. And we're proposing an 18-foot wide driveway that flares into 21 feet, a 25-foot, 20-yard setback. The total increase in impervious is 365 square feet, so we're under the 400-square-foot threshold. However, we're still going to be doing stormwater management mitigation. We're going to be mitigating 706 square feet of impervious surface. We've decided to capture roof leaders as opposed to the driveway. However, it's still going to be an enhancement in terms of stormwater.
Where's the roof exiting now? Is it downspout?
Yes, correct.
And are you going to capture all of the roof?
We're capturing the front half of the roof.
Front half.
So that's...
Where are you going to? What are you going to put there? And where are you going to put them?
So the roof actually slopes. The ridge comes across the center longitudinally. And the front half of the roof slopes toward the front. However, the gutters pitch to the left on this side and to the right on this side to prevent pipes coming across underneath the driveway and for easier maintenance later. We did a separate system on the right and a separate system on the left to capture this portion of the roof. We'll be captured here, and then this portion of the roof will be captured here.
Is there any disturbance to that large oak tree that's there? Is it going to be impacted at all?
Yes, it would have to be removed as part of the plan.
That's a 30-inch diameter oak tree?
Yeah, and it's about five feet off the corner of the house.
I think closer than that.
Right, I'm looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely dangerous. That's from here, 30-inch oak.
Right. So you consider as an absolute necessity to remove the tree to do what you want to do?
Yeah, absolutely. It'll just cause problems for the improvements.
You'll probably damage the root structure when you...
Yeah, absolutely. When they go to excavate for the driveway, definitely damage the root structure.
Did you have to present this to the tree committee?
No, not as of yet. You're our first stop.
No, he'll have to file for a tree removal application to the Public Works Department.
You'll probably have to do some additional plantings to make up for it and whatnot. That's not us, I'm just saying, yeah.
You know, when I listen to your, you know, your making turns and everything going in, if I could get some kind of approximate handle on how many people in Rybrook have to do that, including myself, I'd back out of my driveway. Have you thought of putting a hammerhead in there and keeping the width of the existing driveway so that a hammerhead will allow you to exit the property and even leave a vehicle there instead of widening the driveway? Did you consider...
It's a smaller project.
It's a much smaller project. It will not help you turning in and out and going in the middle of the road. Everybody on my street goes in the middle of the road. Country Ridge Drive isn't exactly Ridge Street, you know? So it isn't that much of a hazard as you're coming in and out. People respect each other. They know them for the most part. And when you move to swing wide to go in, it's rarely a problem. If you were on Ridge Street, I'd say, wow, you know, you really have to be careful.
And the bottom's already flared out.
It's flared out. It's flared out.
Yeah, it's about nine feet, I want to say. Like when the flare goes in, it's about nine feet wide. So with the flare, it's still something like 12, 13 feet potentially at the widest point. Again, for a modern vehicle, you know, vehicles have gotten significantly bigger over the decades. It's a tight fit, if I'm being completely honest. The hammerhead, to the point that would be like a bump out, effectively, right, leaving the first so many feet.
It would enable the car that went into the driveway forward would be able to back into the hammerhead and come out of the driveway straight, which only addresses the exiting, but not necessarily the entrance, which you based a lot of your logic on. The other thing is, you're asking for an 18-foot wide driveway? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, Steve, in terms of normal-sized, there's no such thing as, I guess, a threshold, but what's the minimal amount that you can get two cars in and out?
Two cars? Well, I think one of the things he is seeking is to be able to not park his cars tandem.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, a car width is about 10, 11 feet. So two cars, you know, I think the minimum is... Like you said, some cars are bigger than others. I don't know what kind of vehicles he drives, but...
Well, the variance is going to the house, not to the current owner.
Right.
Now, they could be driving two tiny Teslas and...
I mean, a typical parking space is nine by 18. So that's where we came up with an 18-foot, two parking spaces wide, so that if a car is parked, the other one can get passed.
That's what I was getting at, is the...
So that was the logic behind the width.
Because we've heard that argument before. I just wanted it to be formally stated here.
Okay, got it. Yeah, that was the logic behind it.
What is the width now?
The width now is nine feet, maybe ten feet of the flare.
Does it have to go down as far as it does to, to achieve what you want, meaning towards the street? Like, because I'm okay with the width closer to the house to be able to have a second car. I have a driveway that's supposedly a two-car garage, but I can't fit two cars in there, and it's annoying to, I, so I know exactly what you're talking about. But you have it kind of going like almost three-quarters of the way down if you just had more of a bump out closer to the house.
You could pull the car into the bump out, and then the driveway is free to pull from out of the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, again, the attempting to widen it as it approaches the street is important also, given the implications of getting into the driveway. I can attest to the fact that the dangerous maneuver that I choose to use when I get into the driveway is veering in oncoming traffic. There have been situations when, again, cars approach around what is a blind turn at me, they don't necessarily see me until really the last minute. Not the safest way to do it, right? I, I understand the, the concern about ultimately, listen, nobody wants people to turn their front yard into parking lots. I am not looking to turn my front yard into a parking lot. I am simply hoping to really achieve a similar, a comparable level of maneuverability in my driveway that others in the neighborhood seem to be afforded today.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that the application is ordered to park vehicles within the parking setback.
Right. And that would be, I walked by something yesterday that literally the applicant requested a double, double-lane driveway, and the cars are right up on your cement blocks. So what appears to be the obvious request for the application oftentimes in practice turns out to cars being right in there, not, not just neighbors visiting for a party, but all the time. How wide is your flare-out in the, in the proposal? How wide is that flare-out?
Twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six feet wide?
In an analysis that we did of the neighborhood, there was actually not an uncommon size of a flare-out to, to find at the curb. In fact, I would say in terms of what we would consider a double-wide driveway, at its sort of average point, we were looking at something between twenty and twenty-two feet. The flare-out could easily be north of twenty-two feet.
Why hasn't the village changed the code to allow wider driveways for everybody? The code is what it is. That's what we're basing the, the decision on, what the code is. You're suggesting that the code should be something other than that because other houses are wider now.
To be fair, I don't thi, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I don't think anything in our proposal is really violating anything of the code except for the, the parking in the first twenty-five feet, which, like, again, we wanted to try to demonstrate a proposal here that really was actually narrower within those first twenty-five feet to prevent parking.
Right, because technically, I mean, as I said, if parking space is nine by eighteen, I cannot fit two nine-by-eighteen rectangles within this front yard area, so...
It was what, seventeen-point-nine feet roughly?
Seventeen-point-nine feet.
So with the ASHTO size of the space at, at nine feet wide, we're trying to stay under that two-car width in that space in the first twenty-five feet, so again, to allow a pass through from the garage.
That's why the flare was, is at this location, because technically, if I came eighteen feet back, it would encroach on this flare, and that's why it was placed there, but...
If you go twenty-five feet from the front lot line, does that go right up to the house, or where does that go?
It comes to about here, which is at the halfway through the walkway.
So arguably, just if you did the hammerhead, that would not be in violation of the twenty-five foot, correct?
If it was between my two fingers here, then it would not be in violation of anything...
Which, am I wrong in saying in all probability that if, if you were to do a hammerhead, that's probably where you would do it? Is that likely?
I'd probably do it a little bit further, closer to the street because they're at the back.
All right, so maybe you'd meet, you would need a, a, a small variance, but not, you know? So right now, a variance of eighteen-point-eight-four feet, right?
Yeah.
Unenclosed off-street parking within six-point-one-six feet of the front lot line requesting a variance of eighteen. Variance of eighteen feet off twenty-five is, is huge, isn't it?
Yeah.
What would be other options that you could pursue to achieve the...
Five variance of eighteen feet off twenty-five. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, the, the parking shall not be developed within twenty-five feet of the front line, and you're requesting a variance of eighteen-point-eight-four feet from that variance of twenty-five feet.
We're, we're requesting a driveway to be a double-wide driveway within twenty-five feet of the front yard setback, because there's really no measurement in terms of, like, you're not measuring eighteen feet to a certain specific location. Eighteen feet is, is the width, so I'm not really...
Yeah, I'm not sure where you meant the eighteen feet.
I, I, I think what I were trying to clarify is that when you flare it out here, you could theoretically park a vehicle where it starts to flare out, and that would be within that twenty-five-foot parking setback.
So I tried to discuss this prior to coming to the ZBDA, but if I can prove that you cannot fix parking spaces in the twenty-five-foot setback...
Why, why do you want to park two? You just want to use the area to move to.
I don't want to park, he wants to access.
Right.
He just wants as much space as possible, so if I can show that it's not parking, it doesn't meet the requirements of a nine-by-eighteen parking spot, and then I can fit two of those in, I cannot fit two of those in front of, within that twenty-five-foot setback. Technically, I shouldn't even have to present to the ZBDA, because there's, there would be no parking, because you can't fit legally two nine-by-eighteen parking spaces.
Then why do you need a variance?
I, I was wondering that...
We're not, we're not sure that we do. We're not sure that we do.
Steve, you wonder what might...
The code, the code is not what you are going to use it for, but what you're creating. So you're creating the off-street parking within that twenty-five-foot, you know, front yard setback. That's what was, you know, Mr. Nuremberger may not park there, but who knows, ten years from now, he may sell, somebody else may park there. So that's why the code, it doesn't specify that you can create it as long as you don't park there. It just says you can create it.
All right. So I'm trying to understand, so if you have a car in the garage and you have a second car, your second car would be, let's say your face down to the left, and it's far over on that driveway, on the expanded driveway, are you saying that you couldn't back up the car out of the garage because...
As it currently is or as to what they're...
As to what, as to what they want to do, but seems to me they want to widen it significantly, yet it's not significant enough to actually...
It's not going to serve the purpose.
Right, like, like you, it doesn't look like you could get the garage car out anyway.
Then what's the point of it, then?
In theory, you could potentially squeeze by, I mean, again, parking at nine feet, right?
You have to go, please go before the mic. But would a hammerhead make a lot more sense in that it completely resolves the issue of being able to maneuver the car in and out of the garage, which I understand you have these other issues, but I would think that's the primary issue.
It certainly assists, and I can't deny that. What I would say is...
Steve, do you have a mic for him to use, a microphone?
What we were bringing to the board with the, the curb cut was the safety issue presented in approaching and in fact exiting, right, in such a limited width at the base of the driveway, right?
So theoretically, you could widen the bottom of the driveway three feet to give you an easier turn, is that, and that would, that would satisfy your concern about, about turning in, right? Three, four feet, that's it?
It would certainly help. And then at that point, though, you're saying to widen the curb cut by three feet, but then have the... The same driveway with or without a hammerhead.
That were, that you're trying to reduce from here to here, right? So this portion...
No, I, I, I'm not, right, again, and, and it's not what I, what I would want, I'm just saying, if you widened even the first seven feet after the cobblestone and made it an easier entry...
It would certainly help.
That would alleviate a concern regardless, right? And I don't, that's not a variance issue, right?
I think it's not, it's not after the apron that's the problem. Turning here is the issue, so flaring this makes a vehicle able to access here without doing a three-point turn that you were speaking of, that would have had it in the right lane. Would you like it to come left and then...
All right, so if I'm understanding, I'm going to take from what you were just saying, if you slightly widen the apron...
Absolutely.
You slightly widen the apron, no, if I'm, if I understand correctly, no variance is needed for that because that's not creating parking. And then you, if you want, then you do the hammerhead at the top so that, that clears the pathway from pulling in and out of the garage. Also, if I understand correctly, wouldn't require, unless you go in, you go into that twenty-five foot, at least it'd be a much smaller variance, it wouldn't require much of a variance.
Right. There was another thought process behind this. He's got a one-car garage.
You need the microphone, please, so the audience can hear.
The portable. He has a one-car garage right now, right, that in the future, there may be plans for a two-car garage.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's called incremental creep.
Well, he, he's...
So if I had the money to bring, yeah, bring you the full...
No, but...
Do a two-car garage now.
One of the concerns that we have as a zoning board is that an applicant is made to do A, and then a year or two later, they come back and they say A plus B.
Well, we already did A, so it's not a big deal to do B now.
Why not do B?
So, but if we came here with a garage that is nine feet wider, right, if we put an addition on his house and added nine feet, we would have no choice but to make it twenty-one feet wide, so why not, since he's spending the money now, prep for his two-car garage that he may need in the future.
Well, I don't know that I'm pursuing that plan. I'm simply trying to...
We don't know, but...
Yeah, that's off the, off the radar completely now.
I don't know what variances you would need for that extension, so...
So I'm going to set back some...
I was saying, he's got side yard setback if he wanted to do a garage, you know, he, he's got the, the space on the side to do it.
Again, for not even coming through today to talk about that, this is...
Yeah, that's not even part of the proposal. But that was my thought process in the width, is what I'm saying, when I was approaching the home to prep it so that later, if he did, it was already...
Okay, so I'm going to tell you exactly where I am as I'm sitting here right now. My impression is what you're trying to do is admirable, but it's too much. There are alternatives that, as we've been throwing things out, that are, I think, very workable, that resolve a good portion of your issues and require minimal, if any, variance. And it just seems to make a lot more sense.
For, and for clarification, because I think one of the things we attempted to do was create a plan that did conform completely with the code as it stands today, if we agreed, you know, we, we use the ASHTO, and maybe you could speak to ASHTO, to establish what the standard parking space is at nine by eighteen. This is according to the ASHTO manual, that is a parking space. If we had a driveway that, at its, if we widened it to seventeen-point-nine feet, in theory...
I'm talking about widening, what I was talking about is just widening the apron maybe a couple of feet.
But I'm, and I'm saying in theory, if we had widened the driveway to its entire length to seventeen-point-nine feet...
Right.
We can make the argument that we haven't introduced any additional parking, any ability to park in the current driveway, because you'd need eighteen feet to park two cars side by side. So do we even need the variance, is really the point?
I can't answer that. That would be something to address to, to the building inspector, but I, I can't answer that.
Again, the, the way I interpret the code and the way the code has been interpreted, if, once you widen within that twenty-five feet, you, if you don't have the, the twenty, you need to widen within that twenty-five feet, you need a variance. That's the way...
But the amount that you widen doesn't introduce the ability to park, and you're under the four-hundred square...
If I may, if I may, and tell me if I'm wrong here, it takes into account not just what you're adding, but what already existed to create that theoretical parking spot. Is that correct?
Yeah, you can say it that way, too, but again, just from, from clarification is, once you, that's why a lot of people choose to leave the apron and go up and contour, and they, and they widen out if they have the length. But unfortunately, your driveway, as it is, is only about, you know, forty feet, so you can't really widen till you get twenty-five feet up, and that's why you need the, the variance.
What is that, what is that widening threshold?
So if, if he has a ten-foot-wide driveway right now, we make it thirteen-foot wide, based off of what he said, we would need a variance, and I don't, I don't understand that part.
But if you're just widening the apron, I don't think that, that would count the same way, though. I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm not sure.
But, but I would, so if I, if I have an apron that's twelve feet, and I want to make it fourteen, and then I keep his driveway at the same width that it currently is...
And maybe add a half...
And then add like a hammerhead here where half of it is within a twenty-five-foot setback and half is not, but this width is eight feet, so it's not wide enough to be a parking space right here. I should be able to show that that's not a variance, but according to him, it would have to go here for his, for a variance.
And given, I'm not going to speak for everyone else, but given everything and the efforts made at that point, I would, personally, I would probably be much more, I'll say benevolent towards that proposal as, as an attempt to, to meet what you need and working within the code to the best you can. Clear.
If, if he wanted, is it, if he wanted to add room, could he, on the top portion of the parking lot, put it where that oak tree is and make that? I'm just wondering if that was, you know, and then...
Or make, you don't mind making a hammerhead going that way?
Well, kind of, not just a hammerhead, but may, like, if it wasn't more than a hammerhead, more of a straight-in, and you, if, if you, if that was something that he wanted, are there any restrictions on that? So he would park parallel to the house, you know, kind of come in here?
You'd pull in and then make kind of like, and come around like that?
Right, right, after the twenty-five feet, you'd widen it a little bit and go there. Is that even an option they could...
To me, that's a hammerhead. I don't, you know, I understand it's not exactly the same shit.
I think of a hammerhead as being...
That's something, that's a doable thing.
Right, okay.
I mean, the, the issue here is it's a one-car, it's a one-car garage, one-car driveway.
Right.
So it's not, if it was two-car garage driveway, then it's different, but, you know, you're still within that twenty-five feet you're widening.
We have examples in our study of the neighborhood of houses with one-car garage with double-wide driveways.
Plenty exist in the neighborhood. Thirty-three out of thirty-six. I'm not sure, sure.
Do you have those?
Yes, they're, they're in our, some of the documents that...
Yeah, they're in the documents that we submitted.
I want to say Nine Holly is a...
You really need the microphone for...
Sorry.
I want to say Nine Holly, it's right around the corner from me. It's a house that's a perfect comp here, a single-car garage, quite a wide, double-car wide driveway, would be an example I would, I would cite here.
Right, I mean, there's, so out of thirty-six, within a five-hundred-foot radius, thirty-three have a double-wide driveway, thirty-two have double curb cuts, twenty-six out of the thirty-six are two-car garages, two of them are eighteen-foot garage doors, so two-car garages, but just single door.
Why, why are you comparing yours to a, a home that has two, two garages? Those should be taken completely off the table. The, the code is written, and the zoning board is, is to give relief at the smallest possible variance that meets the needs of the applicant. My interpretation of having to a wider curb cut, to me, has, it doesn't ring with me, you know, because when I, and everybody on my street goes in their driveway, they don't hug to the lane. In other words, if you're making a right turn in, you swing wide, you look for another car coming, and then you go in your driveway. That's not safety or any of that stuff. That, that tails to other safety issues that exist in the village. That's just common sense. You see a car, you wait, they pass, you swing into your driveway. The reason they, they issue the twenty-five-foot ruling is to prevent people from leaving their cars in Rybrook very close to the street. Certain sections of the village, such as on Ridge Street, near the shopping centers, those houses are almost right on Ridge Street, and they need massive relief for parking, especially if they're two-family homes. This type of house in this location is, is a one-car garage with the driveway as built. Some of those that you cite may be pre-existing conditions. They may have been built and approved before the village code came into place, but right now, the village code is what it is at twenty-five feet, and homes are expected, whatever their situation, to abide by that unless there's sufficient reason. What we're trying to do is allow you to get what you want, well, mostly what you want because that other part of the road is driving into something else, achieve your goal with a smaller variance from the code. That's basically what the questioning has been from, from my colleagues, so I guess...
It seems that it's doable.
It's, it's doable, so one possibility is to take the application, rework with a bump out or another alternative that you come out with. We are not going to define what it should be and bring before the board a revised application. And that revision can take any form that you want. Bring it before the board at a later time, or go for that request as it exists now, and if it's denied, what's the ramifications, Steve, if it's denied?
Yeah, if it's...
They can reapply some of...
Sure, they can reapply.
New proposal.
Yeah, they can reapply or amend the... Yeah, they can reapply or amend the, and reapply if they want it.
Right. So, you have that option. You can discuss it, you know, Mr. Nuremberg, you can decide on that, since you're the applicant, whether you want to do that or whether you want to vote on that application today.
Point of clarification, you, you had asked why we were comparing our house to those with two-car garages. This went back to the study we performed, you know, to take a 500-foot radius of the home. Naturally, there will be homes in that 500-foot radius that were both two-car garage and one-car garage. The, the variable that we looked at to sort of create a level playing field was this concept of the lot size relative to the amount of paved driveway. And so, that's something that regardless of how many garages you have, in theory, based on the size of your lot and how much paved driveway you have, there's some ratio where you will find an average for the neighborhood. And that was, again, the point that I had made to say, where it's something like 3.25% the average in the neighborhood is something like 7.242%. So, one to two cars, it's, it's about really just inequitable, inequitable situation.
There are eight single-car driveways, three, eight single-garage homes, three of them are, are double, which, three of them are single, which means five of them are double, I would presume.
Yes.
So, you know, so it's about almost half and half.
See, what, what you're in effect doing with, with the last statement is you're redefining the village code to driveways.
I certainly wouldn't want to do that. I just, I'm putting out, you know, a...
Exactly. As I said in the previous application, most owners of homes in Ry Brook, when we, when we buy our homes, we're not experts in zoning codes. And so, I didn't know there was such a thing behind me known as rich man a park. I thought it was just a park. Then I was told, "It's not a park, it's to hold water. It's a swamp." Okay? So, I didn't know that. I've got trees falling down all over the place, and I'm told that that's good for nature. But it looks like I live in a tornado area. So, I can't redefine the village code the way I would like to see it. Let that be a park, let people walk there, let them chase their children around there. It's a swamp, but it's called a park. So, the code is the code. The code is based on the 25 feet, so that we don't have cars parked on the streets in Ry Brook unnecessarily. That's the rea, that's the logic, as I interpret it. The argument that it should be based on the square foot of the lot, you know, using that argument, if I've got a 26,000-square-foot lot, you know, I should have a five-car wide driveway because it fits in your average. That's not the code. The code is 25 feet. That's the standard.
Yeah, I actually have the, the perfect example of size. My house is similar to yours. I have a one-car garage, and I do have two-car garage envy. And, and...
Would you say you have a double-wide driveway as it stands today?
I wish. But my actual driveway, interestingly, is I have a carport with underneath, but you could put a car under it, but I don't. But, but I can go up to the top. So, with the top, it's wide enough because I can get a second car. It's not a hammerhead, but it's wider.
Right.
Joke, because you know my house. And, but I could put one car and maybe a second if I really type, but, but when I back up, I, you know, it's, it's kind of narrow at the bottom. I've hit the brick side a little bit, so, and, and I have a pretty, for Ry Brook, a pretty, because I'm on a curve, a pretty large-sized property, and no one cares that the, that I could support a bigger driveway. And I've, I've wanted it, right? But I, but I was told, you know, you'd need a variance, so I've never asked, but, but that's the way we did it and the people before me. But, but it gave us plenty of room to have two cars backing out. And, and your, your, by the way, your bottom is, I have flare envy also, because you have, you have a much nicer and wider bottom than, than my driveway. So, to me, it doesn't look that hard to get into, but, but I certainly think you can widen it near the top.
I mean, so basically, just getting right to the nitty-gritty, is as Don said, you can submit it. If it's approved, great. If it's not approved, then you can redo plans and bring a whole new one. Or you can put, you can put this off, come back with a rework plan. Your choice.
We would, yeah, we would probably look to rework the plan based on this, this feedback.
Okay, thank you. So, that, will this be adjourned to the May, what is it, May 1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
May 7, I think. May 7th.
May 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you very much. The next, the next...
And I'm going on this one.
Okay, the next, not to, not to the restroom. The next application is EBA 24-004, Cameron Sager and Jessica Sager, 41 Windingwood Road, second-story addition of a garage and closed porch, new front entry. As was indicated in the notification, one of the board members is within the notification zone. That would be Joel. So, he has recused himself, which leaves us with three remaining board members. In order for the decision to be approved, you need a unanimous approval of all three of, of the members. So, please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jaclyn Tyler with Tyler Architecture and Planning. I also have the homeowners here, Cameron and Jessica Sager are here as well. Before I start, I just want to make sure that we would have an opportunity, as we proceed through the application, that if there are items that are suggested similar to the last application, that we would have the opportunity to adjourn as opposed to coming to a full vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, I had, when I said earlier, up until the point of the application, but even after the application, you could choose to move out of that window and deal with any revisions if necessary.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that before we started. I appreciate that.
Can I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion to open the meeting?
Seconded.
Someone?
The, the application is now open.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's an honor, that's an honor of Rob. Okay, please.
So, thank you for that. Again, we're here tonight for two variances. So, we started this process a couple of years ago. We had a couple setbacks, but we're in front of you tonight, so wanted to walk through those quickly. We did submit a letter. I'm sure you all have that in your possession, which included going through the five different requirements for the area variance. So, tonight, we're here for both a front setback variance. The existing front setback is 35.7 feet to the existing garage, which you can see in that photo. The requirement is 40 feet at the front setback. So, we are looking for a 4.3-foot, 3, 4.3-foot relief, based on the fact that we are looking to build directly over top of the garage. That's the most economical solution for us in regards to utilizing the existing foundation and the existing perimeter walls. I do have some photos here that I'd like to distribute to you, as well as letters of support that we have received from the neighbors adjacent on either side of us, as well as one of the neighbors across the street. So, I'm going to go ahead and share those with you real quick.
Thank you. I got that, thanks.
So, the reason we're sharing those photos are for a couple reasons. They're more pertaining, the first few photos are pertaining to the second variance, the, the back photos are pertaining to the first variance. What you'll see in those photos are, and some of these are split-level, I want to clarify that right from the beginning, but you will see that within the neighborhood, there is a similar massing in regards to building over top of the garage, which is how we came to the solution that we did. In regards to, so that addresses the character of the neighborhood. Again, you know, looking at the elements of the economics, we're trying to do what we can here in order to keep this economical for the clients, based on some hardships that they've had over the last few years. The second variance that we're looking at, and then I'll go through the, the reasonings on them, is the coverage. So, this is pertaining to the main building coverage only. I want to point out that we are significantly under the total impervious coverage for the entire lot. So, what we're looking for here is a 1.4% variance. Permitted is a max of 16%. The existing is currently 16.046, so we're actually just over the permitted max, and we're proposing 17.4%. The reason for that, and if you look at the first few photos that I shared with you, the current entry of the home is very tight. If you look at the third one, you'll see, if, if someone opens the front door, you're blocking that, the corridor that leads to the half bathroom, as well as the kitchen area. So, we are proposing to utilize the existing front porch as the entry, so pulling out the entry, and then providing a front porch, a new front porch in front of that, that entry, the new entry. Again, these aren't significant in regards to percentage or in regards to the fact that we are maintaining the existing front setback. The only change is, is the massing at the second level. So, while we don't, we don't think that there's an undesirable change to the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, again, you have letters of support, which I think also speak to that. As far as looking at another feasible method, we did look at some other options. We looked to try to incorporate a split level so that the massing wasn't as high. However, there's no easily feasible way internally to accommodate a half, a split level above there. Logically, you'd have to go above the basement stairs, and in order to maintain your height in the basement stairs, you're, you're forced to go up to that full level. So, we did look at that. The, whether it's substantial, again, we don't feel that the relief requested is substantial. No physical or environmental conditions will be impacted. Whether it was self-created, I would say yes. I feel like almost always it is self-created. It's something you're looking for. So, while it is self-created, you know, we think that it is the appropriate solution here for, on the site. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, take you through any of these. I will pull up the elevation.
I just want to point out that for members of the board to know, this is a pre-existing non-conformity.
Correct.
So, that enters into our condition, our understanding, so that the reason it's non-conforming is because it was done before the code was, was put into place. So...
What in particular is non-conforming?
The front.
The front yard setback. So, what they're doing is that they're just rising above the pre-existing, you know, so that part of what we, we should be looking at is the fact that it was there pre-existing. Now, question I have is, we've had quite a few split-level redesigns, and normally, what we get from the architect is, "Oh, it's so hard to work with this split level. We'll do our best to, to make it currently habitable," as opposed to the person who originally built it. But the, whenever there's a portico, one of the things we are always concerned about is the variance is for the pre-existing, but what would happen if something was built above that in the future? So...
Above the new, above the new portico?
Above the portico, right.
Understood.
And the current owner, and as you as architect, don't plan on that.
Right, understood.
But once the variance is given, it gives them the opportunity to fly up over that if they want to bump out a room and go through the added expense of doing that. So, what we usually do, and, and I can't speak for the other colleagues...
Add a condition?
Is we, we pre, we put a condition in that, you know, you, you would have to come before the board if you're going to do anything of that sort.
Absolutely.
Even if it might already be necessary to come before the board...
Right.
Think of it as a belt and suspenders kind of thing.
Absolutely.
So, you know, at some point, you would consult with the applicant to, to make sure that they're comfortable with putting a, a condition on any variance that would be granted.
They're here, I think that they would be. I mean, knowing the configuration there, I think it would be very difficult for somebody to be able to get in there, because it's, you know, it's attic area, but I understand the concern, so are you, I'm getting the thumbs up. So, so we would be happy to add that in as a condition.
Okay. The other, the only other issue that I had with that is that, you know, I think that particular area, and I guess Joel, who's recused himself, would indicate, you would know, it's pretty tight, and those houses are pretty much tight together. So, that, one of the things we look at is how it would impact the character of the neighborhood. And so, when you drive through Windingwood, the full amount of Windingwood, what we have now in Ry Brook, on that particular street, is, is a very diverse...
Correct.
Cluster of housing. Some are plain ranches, some are splits, some are, have been blown up into Colonials and so forth, so...
Agreed.
It is an evolving area, for sure. So, my take is adding a second story in that environment doesn't appear to be problematical on face in terms of character. The, the question then is with respect to the size of the variances. So, if we were to ask you, based on your previous workings with the, the applicant, is this the smallest possible variance that you can come up with that will meet the needs of the applicant? And have you tried others, and what were they, and why were they rejected?
Yeah, so, again, we did look at a split level, but that doesn't change, one, I don't know how to, to achieve it internally, but it doesn't change the size of the variance. So, even if we were going to do a split level, that massing would still have to come to the front setback, the existing front setback, the pre-existing non-conforming. So, that doesn't change that number. So, again, it's, it's the 4.3 whether we do a split level or not. In regards to the coverage, we did look at different sizes. However, again, we, we are only proposing an additional 1.35. And even looking at those numbers, we said, "Okay, if we pull this back a foot or so, we're looking at a 0.0, 0.02% reduction in that." So, so we do feel like we are, we are at the minimum in order to keep everything proportional in the, in the building.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, because that's one of the basic questions we're always going to ask. What would be alternative designs? And oftentimes, when you're doing a reconstruction on something, you have to take into account the nuances of, of the house and what would be options. And I'm sure the applicants and you have bounced this back and forth...
Yeah.
A number, a number of times. Jamie, do you have any questions of the architect?
No.
No? Okay. We have, in terms of, is, is there anyone in the audience, other than the three letters that we've received and will be entered into the record, supporting the application? Are there any other members of the audience who want to support the application? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, there being none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Closed, okay, public hearing is closed. Okay. In terms of the size of the variances, I'm comfortable with them being not substantial. You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, obviously, it's self-created. How about the character of the neighborhood? Comfortable with the addition being with that?
Mm-hmm.
Environmentally, the, are you required to file a storm, any kind of stormwater management, capturing?
No, we, the only additional square footage is 100 and... Apologies.
Right. So, you're within the 400-foot...
Yeah, 126 square feet additional coverage.
Okay, where, where is the water going to go from the new addition on the second story? How are you...
So, we'll be relocating the gutters that are on the lower roof up to the top roof and tie into the, to the same downspouts that are currently on site.
And where are the downspouts going, onto the property?
Yes, they go down, they're...
And are you capturing those just in the front?
There's, there's two at the, at either the front corner, so right here and here.
Right.
And then the same location in the rear.
Okay. All right, and there's no problem with the, with the runoff now? Okay, all right. Okay, so there's no need for stormwater, stormwater management? Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with those factors. They're being not substantial, but only self-created, as being the only negative. Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let me read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Cameron and Jessica Sager, care of Tyler Architecture and Planning, P L L C, applicant for two area variances in connection with the proposed construction of a two-story master suite addition over the garage, enclosure of the porch, and a new front entry on property located at 41 Windingwood Road in an R-15 zoning district, said premises being... Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Ry Brook as parcel ID number one three five dot two six dash one dash one. Christian, can you write that condition as I'm going through this? Okay. Whereas the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the Ry Brook zoning code. One, section two fifty dash six, section F, part seven. No permit shall be issued that would result in the increase of any dimensional non-conformity. The existing non-conforming structure has a front yard setback of thirty-five point seven feet where the minimum required front yard setback is forty feet per section two fifty dash twenty, section G, part one. The applicant proposes to build a second-story master suite addition over the garage, which would retain the existing non-conforming setback of thirty-five point seven feet, thereby requesting a variance of four point three feet to allow an increase in the existing non-conforming setback for the proposed second-story addition. Second, section two fifty dash thirty-seven, part B. The maximum allowable main building coverage in an R fifteen zoning district is sixteen percent. The proposed construction will result in an increase of the main building coverage to seventeen point four percent, thereby requesting a variance of one point four percent. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April second, twenty twenty-four, in which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on April second, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. And whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth as section two fifty dash thirteen, section G, part B, item two, section B, part two, A through E of the Ry Brook Code finds with respect to the variances of the Ry Brook zoning code to allow an increase of dimensional non-conformity where the existing non-conforming structure has a front yard setback of thirty-five point seven and a minimum front yard setback of forty feet as required. And the second application finds with respect to the variance of the Ry Brook Code to increase the main building coverage to seventeen point four percent, where sixteen percent is allowed. Okay, let's go through the factors. The required variance will not create any adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. The benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant. The requested variance is not substantial. The requested variances will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved that the variances are provisionally granted at this point for the following reasons and upon the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. And secondly, okay, Christian, you want to read that?
This is my proposed language. Any alterations which would alter non-conformity shall require ZBA approval.
Okay. Comfortable with that? Okay. Be it further resolved that said application for variance from section two fifty dash thirty-seven, section B, to increase the main building coverage to seventeen point four percent, where sixteen percent is allowed, is hereby granted. Okay? And the other one is also hereby granted. So the both variances will be granted subject to the following vote. Steve is excused. Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joel excused, Don, yes, application approved. Three yeses, zero nays. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Christian, here you go.
He also left out.
Okay, moving right along. The next application is ZBA twenty-four dash zero zero five. Jamie Billington and Cara Billington, Six Bondwood Road, second-story addition, one-story rear addition, new deck, new portico, portico siding and windows. Right?
Steve, do you have an ability to talk in the screen tonight? And if not, not, I assume you all have copies of the drawings and I could just talk through it if we can connect. I would, well, that's, I mean, that's the only way I would get something visible.
Hang in there, Joe, hang in there.
I'm starting to fade. Pass on to that.
I know the feeling.
Except for those non-meetings we've had.
Great, yep, thank you. My name is Evan Sikovsky. I'm the architect for the homeowners Jamie and Cara Billington. Jamie is here with us tonight in case we need her. And hopefully we all look familiar to you because we were here almost exactly a year ago to present a very similar but slightly larger version of this project. And we did appreciate the approval that we received a year ago for that project. Unfortunately, it turned out to be beyond the budget of the homeowners. And so we were faced with redesigning and reducing the scope a bit. You know, they had their dream home a year ago designed. And unfortunately, like I said, we've had to take just a little bit out of that. We are actually looking for two variances tonight, one of them being for gross floor area and the other is for impervious coverage. Currently, the lot is an existing non-conforming lot in terms of impervious. And we are actually proposing to reduce that, just not enough to get us below the threshold there.
When you reduce, you still need a variance?
Yeah, I mean, funny enough, I didn't, I wasn't sure of that, I guess. But that was the letter that we received.
What did you take away to reduce that variance?
So let me jump to this for a second. This is the existing survey. And what you can see here on the side is that there's a paved area that comes around on the side of their house right here. So we are actually eliminating, actually, I can draw on this. So we are actually eliminating this whole paved area over here on the side of the house. Now, the coverage of the proposed house is growing ever so slightly. It's about forty more square feet than what currently covers the lot. And we are reconstructing the deck to accommodate the addition on the back of the house. And the deck is growing slightly, but because it's actually going over some of that existing paved area, and we're also taking away, overall, we're net reducing by, where is that number?
All right, but you are increasing the impervious by, or not decreasing the impervious as much as you could have been by extending it over the prior paved area?
I guess that's correct. I mean, there is currently a deck there. So they have an existing deck and they have an existing patio. It created, you know, it's all non-conforming as it currently sits. In order to create the first-floor portion of the addition with the expanded kitchen at the back of the house, we have to reconstruct the deck. And there's just some logic in terms of how that laid out, that it grew slightly, so it's just the same width of that rear addition. And it does meet up with that patio nicely. So.
Can I ask, Steve, can I ask you a question? If they weren't removing that concrete walkway or whatever and they were just extending the deck and whatnot, would they still need the variance on the impervious?
Well, yes, because they're already existing over the impervious already. So they came in with the application already being over. So that's what the catch was, they're already over the impervious. So now they're trying to bring in a little more conformity, but they still need a variance.
Yeah, the only way to truly make it conform would be to basically eliminate that patio. And it's just not something that the homeowner would like to do right now. I will mention, just Jamie reminded me tonight, that it is something, and it's not part of this application and obviously can't be guaranteed because of the cost. But they do have future intentions of reducing the size of their pool. They actually don't want it to be as large as it is right now. And it's, but it's just, the cost is just too much to include it in this project. So it's, for the moment, it's just, you know, a thought.
Boy, that goes into the record books.
To reduce the size of a pool?
There's a lot of work that goes into that, you know. Normally, I'm thinking of a recent application that bypassed us, but the person wanted to do significant laps in their pool, which created a somewhat large pool that upset the neighbor.
I'm sure, yeah.
You know, because it came closer. But that's one for the record books, I think.
So that is the one variance and then the other one being the gross floor area. And just for reference, when we were here before you a year ago, we were asking for, I actually have the original version of this here. We were asking for almost five hundred square feet. It was a little under five hundred square feet. So we've taken off more than two hundred square feet from that ask. So we're still asking for, I'm sure the math is in the disapproval notice, but it's actually under three hundred over what's permitted right now. It's like two, what'd you say, two, I think two ninety or two, something like that we're asking for. So we did reduce from the last ask. And, you know, again, in terms of what they're looking for out of their home and what we feel there are, and a year ago I stood here and I presented a number of different homes that had been granted variances that were as substantial as the one that we were granted a year ago. Again, this one being reduced, but this does get them the space that they are looking for, you know, for a young and expanding family and a modern home as opposed to the smaller spaces that currently exist in this house.
Now, netting all of the changes that you're doing, are you within the four hundred square foot disturbance area?
We're reducing our impervious coverage, so there is.
So net-net, you do not have to do a stormwater management plan?
Correct.
Okay.
I was actually going to ask that question because I live around the corner. Do they, is there a water problem there?
I don't, not that I'm aware of. Jamie, I don't know.
I'm not sure if it's this house or another house I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
I walk my dog there, but I sometimes see water coming from some drainage.
Yeah, Steve, are you aware of any issues in the?
No, I'm not aware of any water issues, no.
Okay, yeah. Okay, is this the, I know you've gone through iterations, but in your opinion, you feel this is the best that you can do in terms of?
I do, you know, again, in terms of the spaces, and there have been a lot of compromises. We eliminated a bedroom that they wanted. We also drastically shrunk a home office that they were looking to add. You know, both of them do work from home. And so having that office space is helpful to them and it is now a much smaller space. You know, in my opinion, we've done what was possible, you know, while still creating good design and good architecture.
Okay, all right, fine. I just wanted, for the record, have those iterations documented. Do you have any other questions of the, no further? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? There being no comment from the audience. Steve, are you aware of any letters coming in?
No, I just wanted to make one comment to Ms. Sikovsky. On the zoning legend there, you have the wrong address on that zoning. Christian pointed it out, you got ten Country Ridge Drive on there.
Okay.
I thought I had emailed you about that, but Christian just reminded, yeah.
Well, I must be here for the wrong house then.
We just approved, so that would be what, ten?
On ZZ one, he has the wrong.
The title blocks.
Title block. Yes, give me a revised on that.
Okay, so I still go with the six, number six?
But the zoning analysis is based on Six Bondwood, not on this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Okay, any comments in terms of the size of the variances? Do you feel they're substantial? Variance of eleven and two fifty-eight.
The two fifty-eight is.
Proportionally.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I would go the two fifty-eight is substantial.
You would, okay. You agree with that, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, comfortable with that? Okay. Self-created, how do you feel about the character of the neighborhood? No impact?
No.
Okay, and in terms of environmental conditions, no problem? Okay, and you feel it's the smallest possible variance to meet the needs? Okay. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Jamie and Cara Billington, care of Evan Sikovsky, the applicant for two area variances in connection with the proposed construction of a second-story addition, one-story rear addition, new deck, portico, siding and windows on property located at Six Bondwood Road in an R twelve zoning district. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Ry Brook, parcel ID one thirty-five dot fifty dash one dash forty, the property. Do we want to condition the portico in this case? Do you feel it's necessary?
What do you think?
There's no GFA limit. They're not pushing the GFA limit.
And I would say no. I'd say leave it alone.
You don't want to condition it?
If you want to, let's do it then.
I would, because technically they can increase it without going over the GFA. So do you want to add the same one when we get to it?
You're talking about the house's gross, I mean, one of the variances for gross floor area?
Yeah, belt and suspenders.
Okay.
Okay, is the applicant comfortable with that or?
I don't think there's ever going to be an intention to build over that, but.
Famous last words, Evan.
Just the entry portico, the little overhang over your front porch. Yeah.
You know, if I had a dollar every time I heard Ry Brook forever, it really should be Ry Brook until my youngest child graduates and I can get out of the taxes. That's really the new reality. Whereas the applicant seeks to relieve from the following requirements of the Ry Brook zoning code. One, two fifty dash twenty-one, section E, the maximum allowable gross floor area is three thousand twenty-three square feet. The proposed construction will result in a gross floor area of three thousand three hundred and twelve square feet, thereby requesting a variance of eleven square feet. Second, section two fifty dash thirty-seven, section C, the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is forty-eight fifty square feet. Proposed additions will result in a total impervious coverage of five thousand one hundred and eight square feet, thereby requesting a variance of two hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April second, twenty twenty-four, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on April second, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. And whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern and upon considering each of the factors set forth in section two fifty dash thirteen, section G, part B, item two, section B, items two A through E of the Ry Brook Code, finds the proposed variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. Three, the requested variances are substantial, mainly one of them. The requested variance will not create any adverse impact to the character, to the physical impact, physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variances is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved that said application for an eleven-square-foot variance from the maximum allowable gross floor area and a two hundred and fifty-eight-square-foot variance from the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is hereby provisionally granted for the following reasons and upon the following conditions. One, no permit. One, no permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. And secondly, okay, Christian?
There shall be no alterations which further alter any non-conformities.
Okay, will you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, let's, we agreeable to that, let's take a vote. Steve is excused. Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Application approved. Yeses, zero nays, one excused. Congratulations. Okay, our last application?
Do we have to vote alphabetically?
Yes.
So much pressure.
Yeah, I know. You're up to the chair. You're up to the task. Okay, let me read the... Application ZBA 24 dash 006, Shubin Ma and Wenhei, 10 Boxwood Place, for new deck. Okay, who's making the presentation?
Good evening, my name is Eva Filipovic. I'm the architect of record for the application for Wenhei and Shubin Ma. The address is 10 Boxwood Place.
Can you talk into the mic?
Sorry, yes. So the address is 10 Boxwood Place, and we are asking for two variances. So my clients would like to build a deck outside of their kitchen, and we are proposing a deck that's going to be 245 square feet, which is 88 feet outside of the minimum, maximum impervious area of 5,300.
How does this compare to the prior deck?
So there was a prior deck there, and there was like a leftover patio door, which is currently just like this. The prior deck was also encroaching inside the rear, so there, sorry, there are two variance requests. One is for the impervious area, and the second one is encroaching into the side yard setback 4.75 feet, or four feet and nine inches. The previous deck was also encroaching into that space, but it was like six foot, I think, which is a little bit not really functional to arrange any deck furniture. So given the day have to construct this deck, they would like to make it functional as well and have the best use of it. So they're proposing to slightly increase the width of the deck, and another reason being that it's also, basically from the standpoint of construction, it's much easier, if I show you here, to make it like flat, you know, to line all the girders in one line, and then to have like a small overhang of two feet, which would be one quarter of this. So one quarter of the span structurally, but...
How wide is that, the part on the right?
10 feet.
Yeah, the part to the right.
Overhang is two feet, so eight feet main span and two feet overhang. And it's aligning, also the deck is like connecting to the back patio over here, which also existed. I can show you previous, this was the previous deck, this was the previous survey from 2007 when my clients purchased the house. And this is the current survey.
And what was wrong with the, with the prior measurement, the prior size of the deck?
Prior size of the deck, I think it's, well, minus 14 times 2, 28 feet. So we are asking for another 28 feet compared, basically it was 60 feet probably variance before, and now it's like...
But you're claiming the prior size wasn't functional?
The prior size is actually, it had to be demolished because it was in a very bad shape structurally.
No, I understand that, but why are you increasing the size?
It was not functional, like a deck of six feet is really like, I mean, just to put two chairs in a deck and a table, you'd need like 10 by 10. So there's like 10 by 10, and then additional kind of passage to connect to, to connect to this, to connect this long passageway to the back deck. So that's the reason. So this is the proposed increase, this is the proposed side back now, which is like 10, 10, 10 feet.
2.5, 10 to...
10.25, yes.
Now, facing those shaded blocks, that's the walkway from the front?
Yes, yes.
So facing, facing the house from the street, these changes will be on the right side?
Yes, it's on the right side, and it's quite screened from the street.
That's what I'm, that's looking at.
Yes, it's barely visible, and also from the, so this is the view from the street. It's also set back a little bit behind this front wall. And also, this is the view from the neighbor. Actually, this is the view from my client's kitchen, but like the neighbor will have this evergreens that are completely screening the view towards the deck. So in our opinion, it is not really creating any adverse impact to...
How high is the deck off the ground?
It's six inches below the kitchen level, which is, I think, less than four feet, around four feet. I can check.
So it'd be very hard to see it from a neighbor?
Yes, very hard to see, both from the street because it's kind of on a, I think it's, yeah, it's four feet, two inches.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, it's actually less, minus six inches, which is like three foot eight, because it's six inches from the kitchen level, from the 00 of the house.
And the, you said that oftentimes when we allow a deck to be rebuilt, normally we would say if it's, what was it, Steve, less than 50% of the replacement?
Yeah, greater than 50%.
It's greater than 50%. Okay, so this is in effect, so they took this down with the intention of rebuilding?
Well, it was structurally unsound. I think it had like the previous, I mean, even though it had like a proper permit and approval, it was built in 1996, I think.
When was it taken down?
Recently, because...
Recently, okay.
It's a collapse.
Yeah, because you have a sliding door there, so, you know, it makes sense to have something to go to.
Yes, and it does make sense to create like a five-foot deck, which is what would the zoning allow.
But keeping in mind, it does connect to that long stretch, which I presume you have chairs placed there, and people sit there.
On the long stretch, no, that would be only to connect, and that's also what existed before.
Connect to what?
It was only like partially, it was built in stone, and the rest was like a deck, like a wood deck. Now it will be all deck, yes, but the seating will be actually in this...
So what is that stretch for then?
That was, I was asking...
To connect the back patio to this kitchen deck.
What back patio? I was a little confused, okay.
Okay, so, sorry. So this is currently how it looks. There is an existing stone patio in the back, and there are like stairs, partially demolished, stone.
Is that a raised patio, or is that on the ground?
This patio is on the ground, but like then the, the ground goes down as we, like towards the street, so I think there is like two or three feet difference in between the back and the area where, actually, so the area where the deck will be, it's five, four feet off the ground.
All right, so there's a fair amount of, I'll just call it patio space. There's a lot of patio space there. It's not like, it's not like you're relying on this one deck to put, for, as a sitting area. You got a fair amount of patio space already.
In the back, yes, but that's also morning sun, and this is the afternoon sun. And also, they would like to connect them to be able to walk without going down into the grass.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit. Regardless of the size, whether it's a five-foot deck or a 10-foot deck, whatever, you know, you have that connection. The point you were making, you wanted the larger area because you wanted a place where you can sit around a table.
Yes.
But you, but you do have that on the other deck.
It's, I mean, patio, it's like flat to the ground, it's just stone paved, yes, as opposed to this, which would be like a wood deck.
I guess the direction of the questioning is, is this the smallest possible deck that will meet the needs of the applicant?
It's a small...
Without shrinking it a little more? That's basically the logic.
It's the smallest possible functional deck that would allow some kind of seating, like because making a deck of five, five-foot deck...
So what are the dimensions, length and width?
10 by 14.
10 by 14?
Yes, so 14 on this side.
It's not, it's not, no.
Being up.
They're not exactly deck deficient.
No.
Sorry, it's 10 by 13 and a half. So one area would be for sitting, and the other one would be to pass and, pass by and go to the back.
All right. Okay, you have enough information?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of the application, there being none? Anyone want to speak against the application, there being none? Motion to close the public hearing? Okay. What's your feeling?
When you go to read the resolution, there was a minor typo in the resolution before you. It's missing three of the standard...
Yeah, you can change it. That way I don't have to deal with it. What I was gonna say was that, on one hand, they're not exactly deck slash patio deficient. On the other, on the other hand, it's not a lot, it's not a large deck. You know, as decks go, it's not a large deck. And it does make it from a less-than-functional deck into a functional deck. More than, more than functional deck. Well, it's not, it's not making, it's not making it really large, but you also gotta look at it in terms of, it's not just by itself, there's a whole configuration there. You know, there's a root, and then there's the lowered patio, so it's not, it's not just, gee, this is a house with one little deck, and they need it, and they like to have a deck. They have a whole thing, but again, it's not a dramatic, they're not trying to create a 20, 20 by 20 deck. Okay?
What's the room that the deck leads to come from?
It's a dining room.
Sliding doors?
Sliding doors.
Okay, okay, you have that?
Do you have that? Looks like you're missing, I'm sorry. So for this resolution, it is missing those three standards, and it looks like I think that was accidentally omitted.
Okay, so give me that one to sign.
This is the, this is the application we're currently discussing.
Right.
And you just gotta add in that language.
And then just cite these three whereses before...
Let me use that one and sign this one, how's that?
Well, this is the resolution for 10 Boxwood, that is the resolution for...
So you're gonna have to read the beginning stuff...
Yeah, so read all of this.
Right.
And then, right before you start, discuss the factors.
Then you can switch over.
Just switch over to those three factors, and then use this one, 'cause my secretary ...
Okay, all right. Firing squad on Wednesday.
Well, you passed our test.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, in a nutshell, I'm not really, I'm not really opposed, it's not a dramatic...
Yeah, I think, I think there's screening, I think there's screening there. Again, as you said, it's not overly large, you know, I don't have a real problem with that at all. Would you consider the, that variance to be, one of them is, to me, is de minimis, well, the 4.75 proportionally is about a third.
That's substantial.
That's substantial. Quantitatively substantial, but qualitatively not. Okay, and the 88 square feet, I'd say is de minimis. All right, okay, let me read and combine, okay. What the hell is this?
So you're gonna start with this one, then just add in this stuff?
Yeah, okay, yeah. All right, gotcha. Okay, whereas applicant has been made to the zoning board of appeals by Wenhei and Shubin Ma, Ma, sorry for any mispronunciation. Care of Eva Filipovic, the applicant for two area variances in connection with the proposed construction of a deck on property located at 10 Boxwood Place in an R15 zoning district. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Rybrook is parcel ID number 129 dot 67 dash 1 dash 22, the property. Whereas the applicant seeks to relieve from the following requirements of the Rybrook zoning code. Section 1, item 1, section 250 dash 20, section G, part 2, section A, the minimum required single side yard setback is 15 feet. The proposed deck will result in a single side yard setback of 10.25 feet, thereby requesting a variance of 4.75 feet. Secondly, code section 250 dash 37, part D, the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is 5,299 square feet. The proposed deck will result in a total impervious coverage of 5,387 square feet, thereby requesting a variance of 88 square feet. Okay. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on April 2nd, 2024, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas public hearing was closed on April 2nd, 2024. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required.
And switch back over.
Whereas the board from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concerned, and upon considering each of the factors set forth, at section 250 dash 13, section G, part B, item 2, section B, parts 2A through E of the Rybrook Code, finds, one, the requested variance will not create any adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. The benefits the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue. The requested variances are substantial, one of which is, the requested variances will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And fifth, the need for the variance is self-created. Be it resolved that said application for the variances from section 250 dash 20, section G, part 2, item A, and section 250 dash 37, section D of the Rybrook Code, is hereby provisionally granted until we vote for the following reasons and upon the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Okay, are we comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Steve is excused. Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don, yes, application approved, yeses, four yeses, zero nays, one excused. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with that.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, we have two minutes. I was present for the January, I think Steve was absent, I was absent from the March, Steve was present. So I can't vote on the second one, but are we comfortable with the January minutes?
Yes.
As approved, yes, okay, minutes are approved. How about the March? I can't vote.
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay. The March minutes have been approved. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second meeting is adjourned, thank you.
I'm so tired, I can't even get the second one out.
Steve?